Well, what do you think? Shall we start?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the July 20th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. To all of you attending virtually, thank you for joining us. Please know that we want to hear from you. If you're in the audience who would like to address the commission during public comment for an item on the agenda, there's two options. For those on Zoom, please use the raise your hand button at the bottom of the screen. When it's your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and given three minutes to address the commission. If you're calling, if using a telephone, you may address the commission by pressing star nine. And when it's your turn to speak, you will be given three minutes to speak to the commission. You may only speak once per agenda item. Pamela, roll call, please.
First, Chair Biassoti.
Here.
Vice Chair Harmon.
Here.
Welcome to commission, Commissioner Durazo.
Thank you.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Amuse is Mary.
I see Commissioner Johnson. Here. Alright, Commissioner Lething.
Here.
Commissioner Madden is absent for the moment. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have six members. You have a call.
Thank you very much. Okay, first item of business is a pledge of allegiance from our newest commissioner. Commissioner Durazo would like to lead us in the pledge, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
How we.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Alright, item one is the approval of minutes for May 18th, 2021. Anyone have comments or a motion?
I make a motion we approve the minutes of 21, oh, May 21.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Pamela, I guess this is a roll call vote, please.
Chair Biassoti.
Hi.
Vice Chair Harmon.
Hi.
Commissioner Durazo.
I'm going to stain.
Good point. Commissioner Johnson.
I.
Commissioner Lething.
I.
Commissioner Madden still absent. Commissioner Morgan.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item two, public comments for items not on the agenda. Once again, for Zoom users, please raise your hand and for folks on the phone, star nine. And Pamela, do we have anyone out there in the public wishing to speak to the commission?
Mr. Chair, we do not see a hand at this moment. You may proceed to the next item.
Okay. Item three, conflicts of interest. I've got one on the second item this evening.
Yes.
I also have one on Santa Lucia. I have a property owner within the range.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So staff notes that Chair Biassoti and Commissioner Johnson are both conflicted out on item five B.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Harmon, if you would be so kind as to take care of that item when we get there.
Certainly.
Alright, that's item three. Item four is stricken from the agenda this evening, so we'll move right to five A, which is 3111 Summit Road. And staff report, please.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Brandon. And for the first item on tonight's agenda, we have Use Permit 21-003 at 3111 Summit Road. This is a request for a use permit to allow a residential addition that would exceed the existing floor area by greater than 50%. Staff does recommend approving the use permit based on the findings and conditions of approval contained in the staff report. Currently, the subject lot is a 5,000 square foot lot that is found on Summit Road in Pacific Heights III, which was subdivided in 1958. The current home is 1682 square feet, containing three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a two-car garage. It is a typical ranch-style property of the area neighborhood, as they were all developed about the same time. The project proposes to add a 200 square foot addition to the first floor and a second floor addition of 769 square feet. The total proposed addition is 969 feet, which would increase the home from 1682 to 2651 square feet. The proposed first floor would include a new family room and stairway to the second floor, while the new second story would include a master bedroom, a bathroom, and a loft. Therefore, the entire home would be four bedrooms and two bathrooms, with the existing two-car garage to remain. We did receive one public comment today from a neighbor who was concerned about the height of the addition, as well as the placement of windows adjacent to his yard, concerned that the windows could be placed in a manner that could seep into his home. He did wish to, he may be here tonight to also reiterate that statement. The ARC did review this project on May 13th at a public meeting. There was some discussion around the cantilevered facade, which staff did note is not allowed per San Bruno Residential Design Guidelines. However, the ARC did find the original design to be adequate and passed it with no recommended modification. Despite increasing by 50%, this project does remain under maximum permitted floor area, under lot coverage, and under height limit. So it does still comply with all development standards of the municipal code. And besides the cantilevered facade not complying with residential design guidelines, all other aspects of the project do. It does comply with the daylight plain requirement necessary of second-story additions, and it does comply with all style and material guidelines matching the present house and other relevant guidelines. So staff does find that this project would be consistent with all use permit findings and does recommend its approval. And that concludes the presentation for Use Permit 21-003.
Thank you, Brandon. Do we have any questions for staff?
Just one question. Is the complaint coming from the left side or the right side?
I wasn't told for certain, but I assume it's the left side.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have a question for staff? Alright, in that case, we'll open up, we'll open up public comment and we'll have the applicant speak. Is the applicant present, Pamela?
Yes, the applicant. Sorry, I'm not Pamela, but yes, the applicant.
Thank you, Brandon.
Mr. Chair, we have the owner and as well as the architect and designer available, both for questions.
Thank you. Did they want to make a presentation or talk to the commission?
I don't see them having ability to speak on Zoom, so I assume, I don't see any hands either, so I assume no, unless I am, okay, there you go. Now we see a hand. And I believe we're working on making sure that they can speak. There we go.
Hello?
There you go. Go ahead.
Hi, sorry. I'm actually on my way from Vegas back home. And I am the owner of 3111 Summit Road. I understand that our neighbors were concerned about having too many windows overlooking his property. We got rid of three windows that were overlooking his property. And the ones that are, the two windows that you see in the first image to your left is actually overlooking on top of his garage. There is only a single window that kind of looks over his garden, but that's higher. And it's the staircase, so it's not like we're going to have a direct view into his garden.
Alrighty, thank you. Does she have anything else you wanted to add tonight?
That was pretty much it. Other than that, we are definitely complying with the building, the city building code, so we're hoping, you know, this gets approved. If you have another question for me, I'm right here.
Alright, hang on for just a second. Do any of the commissioners have a question for the applicant?
No. I just wanted to, on the one window, my, I'm trying to remember if I, I think I might have sat on the Architectural Review Committee when we discussed this. Is it the window, it's the one that's farthest back, the two more forwards ones are over the garage, and then the one at the back, it's over a stairwell, and essentially it's over the landing, so that a person's head height there would still be below the window?
That is correct, yes. That's exactly what it is.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh huh.
Is there anyone else with a question for the applicant?
No.
Commissioner Morgan?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, very good. Then we'll.
I see a hand from Commissioner Lething.
Hi, sorry. I was just curious. I did not have the opportunity to go and view the site in person today, and I did read in the notes in the staff report that the applicant had at the ARC meeting provided other properties in the neighborhood that did have the cantilevered style. And that seems to be the only concern that staff had raised outside of the 50%. Does either the applicant or the ARC members have any recollection of how those look relative to these? Because.
So basically, what we did is we pretty much walked the neighborhood. And this design that we chose was most commonly noted on all these properties. In fact, the house that's right behind ours is kind of built with the same architectural design. There are a couple of them on Susan. We saw a few on Fasman. So we have been trying to kind of, you know, kind of go with the same design and not stick out like a sore thumb.
Okay, thank you. No, I appreciate that. And as it's drawn, I actually find it very attractive. So I appreciate, I appreciate your effort to be in keeping with the neighborhood.
Thank you so much.
Alright, is there any more commissioners with comments?
With here, Mary Lou.
Right.
I started on the architectural review, and because I live in a house that has a cantilevered, and also the majority of Portola Highlands are designed this way, during the meeting that evening, I believe it was Michael Smith that pulled up, went on Google, on Google and Earth, and reviewed many of them and saw that it actually was a good design. And that was the reason that we moved forward with supporting movement towards the planning commission. It really was well done as it was presented.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Brandon.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the applicant? Okay. Alright, Pamela, is there, we'll open up the public comment now for the Zoom users at home. If you'd like to speak to us, raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, it's star nine. And Pamela, do we have anyone in the public that would like to speak to us?
I don't see any hand at this moment.
Okay. We'll give them just a few seconds here. Once again, that's raise your hand or star nine on the phone.
Still see no hand. I think we're good to proceed.
Alright, can we get a motion and a second to close the public hearing, please?
I will move to close our public hearing.
I'll second.
Awesome. Thank you so much, guys.
You're welcome. And Pamela, maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Chair Biassoti. Chair Biassoti, I assume that's, yes, hi. Vice Chair Harmon.
Hi.
Commissioner Durazo.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
I.
Commissioner Luthen.
I.
Commissioner Morgan.
Hi.
Commissioner Madden has just joined us in time for his motion. He's still out in the attendees. Paul, if you can be so kind, there you go. He's been brought into the room, just in time for his action. Commissioner Madden, if I can cast your vote on closing the public hearing?
Uh, yes. Sorry.
No worries, no worries. Mr. Chair, motion passes.
Thank you. Alright, so at this time, we'll bring it back to the commission for comments, discussions, motions, and votes. Anyone?
I'd just like to say that there was a lot of discussion at the ARC meeting about the cantilevered front. And it's as Mary Lou said, we came to a conclusion that it was in keeping with the area and we voted to go ahead with it.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussions, or do we have a motion from anyone?
Through the chair. There was no public comment, but there was articulation of a concern. I don't know if that was how that was communicated, if that was emailed. Can we get a little more context about what that concern was? I was, I was hoping that that individual would be here to speak during public comment, but they weren't.
Of course. Can staff address that, please?
Yes, it was a neighbor who called me and left a message yesterday, and I talked to him this morning. And just the, I believe, next-door neighbor who had concerns about height, window facing into their yard and blocking of sunlight by the new addition.
Was that concern addressed? It sounded like some of the windows were eliminated and there weren't as many per the applicant. Did that address that concern, or what was the timeline on those?
It was, it was just a public comment given to me to present to the, to the commission. So just, just for the record.
Copy, thank you.
Mr. Commissioner Durazo, if I may, so we usually present the latest complaints or concerns or feedback since the completion of staff report. So this particular neighbor received the notice and also received a staff report packet, would like to make a note of his or her concern. But the fact that he or she was, is not here present tonight, hopefully they have found the reasonable or amicable solution to their questions. If not, they'll definitely contact staff and we can follow up.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, just to jump in there, I think the concerns were briefly addressed by the commission tonight, including the height restriction there, beneath the height restriction. It sounds as though the windows that are existing on the top left, presuming that the complainant was on the left-hand side of the, of the property, the subject property, the larger windows overlook the roof of their garage, so that should not pose a privacy concern, as well as the smaller window at the stair landing also should not pose a privacy concern. And I can't remember the other thing that was mentioned.
If I may, I think, Brandon, that was a daylight plain issue that was brought up.
And we, just as a, as a point of, my understanding is as a point of our municipal code, we don't have a view ordinance, and the only justification for sunlight being a concern, you know, like there is a state law about overshadowing solar panels, but this isn't nearly high enough to be relevant to that. And yeah, so there is no, there's no sort of cause of action to deny a permit based on this issue.
Yeah, sorry, if I may, the San Bruno Residential Design Guidelines do ask for new second-story additions to comply with a daylight plain or facade articulation requirement, and this project has done so.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Durazo?
More than enough, thank you.
Alright, very good. So at this point, are there, is there any more conversation on this item, or do you want to make a motion and a vote?
I, sorry, I may go ahead and make a motion to approve a use permit 21-003 based on findings 1-6 and conditions 1-23.
Very good. Second, anyone?
Second.
Thanks. We have a motion and a second. Pamela, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Chair Biassoti.
Hi.
Vice Chair Harmon.
Hi.
Commissioner Durazo.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
I.
Commissioner Lething.
I.
Commissioner Madden.
Hi.
Commissioner Morgan.
Hi.
Motion passes. Mr. Chair, we're concluded with the first item of the agenda.
Very good. Then I'll pop out, and Commissioner Harmon, if you would be so kind?
Certainly.
Thank you. Paul, if you don't mind removing Mr. Chair and Commissioner Johnson for the moment?
Yes, I'll do that right now. They are in the attendees room.
Thank you, Paul. Vice Chair?
So we're good to continue?
Yes.
On item five B, 141 Santa Lucia Avenue, I believe we have a staff report from Brandon again. You are muted. Oh, there you go.
Hello again, everyone. For the second item tonight, I do have a use, a use permit, a request, and architecture review permit. So the use permit is a request to exceed existing floor area by greater than 50% and an architecture review permit to allow an addition of greater than 1,000 square feet. So this is, does qualify for sequo exemption, and staff does recommend its approval based on the findings and conditions contained in the staff report. This lot is on Santa Lucia Avenue, a 5,344 square foot lot between Alcomino Real and San Anselmo Avenue. It is located in Lomita Park, which was subdivided in 1904. The current home is built on the rear one-third of the property, almost 60 feet from the property line. The existing home includes three bedrooms and two bathrooms at 1,196 square feet. The project does propose 1,589 square feet of addition and interior remodel to increase this home to 2842 square feet. This is entirely a first-floor addition, and there is no new second floor being proposed. There's currently a one-car detached garage on the property, and the project, when completed, proposes a new attached two-car garage. There was a use permit approved in 2002 for the original home, which was 669 square feet, increasing it by 542 square feet. And I did miss in the staff report, or I was, did not put in the staff report that there was an additional use permit that was approved by Planning Commission in 2006 for almost the same project, but it was never built and expired. So the ARC did see this project on July 15th. There was some discussion about changing the front facade of the home to have more decorative elements and have a more defined entrance. But ultimately, it was approved by ARC with the recommendation to make changes to the entrance and front facade at the director's discretion of the final. This project would actually bring this home into better compliance with the neighborhood because it is almost 60 feet from the sidewalk. So at present time, the neighborhood is comprised of single-family homes around 15 to 20 feet from the sidewalk and multi-story apartment buildings. So this is actually the only property within several blocks that doesn't have a set, much closer setback. So staff is of opinion that this project will bring the home into further compliance and make the home fit better with the neighborhood. As mentioned, there is a one-car detached garage on the property, which is proposed to be incorporated as a two-car attached garage in the final product. Despite all the additions and the 1,000 square foot addition, this project still stays below maximum floor area, maximum lot coverage, and well below building height. So it does comply with all development standards of the San Bruno Municipal Code, as well as recommendations of the San Bruno Residential Design Guidelines. And that concludes the presentation for 141 Santa Lucia Avenue. Are there any questions?
Mr. Vice Chair, do you have any questions for staff?
I do not at this time. I sat in the ARC, so I discussed it. You know, actually, well, okay, I'll open up for the other members first, if anybody would like to ask questions.
Yes, we discussed the front entrance at the ARC, and it was felt that it needed something else. Personally, I think if the column in the middle was removed, it would look better. But that's just one point. There's also discussion about the siding, whether it was horizontal or vertical. And I think the owner wants to go with vertical T111, which I think looks awful. It's outdated with present-day standards. And I think horizontal siding with a composite material such as hardy, I think would look way better. Just my opinion.
Were there any other comments from the, or questions?
I don't, I don't have any questions right now, but I wanted to, just while we're on that topic, real quick. I did, I did manage to drive by today and, and view the property. And bringing it forward is really going to be a big benefit. I still do believe we need to discuss the issue of the porch and the lack of architectural articulation in the front facade. But regarding the T111, surprisingly, the material that's on the existing home does seem to be the T111. And although rustic, it is in good condition, and I can understand why the applicant may want to keep that material as part of the house. So although generally, I'm not a big fan of that material, I'm not opposed to it on this project.
So I wanted to ask staff in regard to the front porch situation. There had been some discussion at the ARC about whether this design actually had some kind of issue in terms of complying with, you know, sort of details of our, of our code. And I think the feeling was that we wanted to incorporate that as an actual condition, but that ultimately, we were delegating discretion to the planning director to kind of, you know, approve or not the final designs, but to work with the architect and owner. Right, you know, we didn't, we don't want to bog this down in like coming back to ARC another time and then back through Planning Commission. But that there was enough concern that we really did want to see an actual condition of approval that that front porch is going to be redesigned. Because it is, it is sort of a funny little box porch, but I think, as Kelly put it, that it was like you sort of punched two holes in this box, and there was sort of no articulation of the surface. So I guess I wanted to make sure that we actually, did we establish that as an additional condition on the permit? Or is it sort of purely a recommendation that has no effect?
It was not established as a condition at ARC recommendation, but I believe, and Pamela, correct me if I'm wrong, that the commission can definitely incorporate any conditions on the property in this meeting.
That's correct. So commissioners, if you feel that additional conditions should be placed upon the project, this is the chance to do so.
See a hand from Commissioner Madden.
Yeah, thanks. So would it be possible, Brandon, to show the plot plan? I think I heard some talk about the front setback is changing significantly. that, right?
So, um, yeah, so currently that, it's, it's hard to see, let me see if I can zoom out a little bit, but, um, so currently if you could see the, the existing house on the left far back, uh, this is to scale with the, with the, um, plan on the left and then the, the, um, the new house on the right. So let me see if it, it should.
So the, the darkened area is, is the new addition?
That's correct. So, um, at the present time, it's, uh, I think sixty-one feet from the back of the sidewalk, fifty-nine feet from the property line.
Okay, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't our guideline recommend that feet, the first thing? Is, is, you want to have like a, a setback where the entrance to the house is closer to the sidewalk than the garage door? Is that something I'm misremembering or is that?
So, um, there, the, uh, setback to the regular part of the house is less than the garage, but it's, it's not a requirement that it has to be that way. So I believe at present, the whole house will come to a twenty-five foot setback, um, from the property line, um, but the requirement is to be, the, the minimum you can be is fifteen feet to the house, but the driveway must be twenty feet from the back of the sidewalk. So there's still, um, there's still less than what's minimally required.
Right, but what, what I'm getting at is that the left house where the porch is, that's, the, the, the front door is, is further away from the sidewalk than the garage door. And I believe the guidelines for the city, once you do the opposite, they want the, the entrance to the house more prominent than the garage door. Is that true?
Um, the residential design guidelines do, um, recommend a prominent entrance, but there's no specific, uh, requirement that it's any, you know, um, any certain amount of feet, uh, from the sidewalk, as long as it covers the required setbacks.
Okay, um, and then this T-one-eleven, you're saying the existing front house shows that, but it doesn't seem to, um, look that way on the elevations that you had on the previous screen. It looked like the existing elevation showed horizontal siding. Is my, uh, off there too?
Uh, so at the A R C, there was a, um, additional rendering that was presented from, um, the applicant. So these are the, these are the site plans, but there is also an additional rendering, um, which is on a separate plan, which I can find.
Did, did, did that up when you were talking originally? Can you bring that back? It looked like that the upper part of the screen was existing elevation and then below it was the new and they both have horizontal siding. So I was a bit confused about the T-one-eleven.
Sorry, there was, um, further discussion about this at the A R C, so the existing house is horizontal siding and they did present it that way in the elevations. However, in the rendering, they presented it with vertical siding, which is what the, um, the owner prefers, but they had also said that if it was a require, requirement from the, um, architecture review committee to do one or the other, they would follow whatever the A R C said. Um, so they had, said they wanted to do vertical, but would do horizontal if required.
And specifically T-one-eleven is what they wanted to use for vertical or just vertical?
Uh, that was discussion by some of the commissioners, uh, with the applicant, I believe, but, um, not information that I had personally.
Okay.
If I might jump in real quick here, I think maybe I can help, um, I drove, when I drove by today, if my eyes did not deceive me, I do think that the existing siding is, um, vertical and not horizontal. So that maybe, maybe we could look at the, the, uh, photograph of the subject property and that might clarify for us what it, what the existing conditions look like, but it sounded to me like the applicant, uh, did want to keep the vertical siding and have it be T-one-eleven.
So I will, I will, um, I'll open up the staff report packet, but, um, all of these materials are also part of the staff report packet, if you have that as well.
Yeah, I'm, I am looking at the relevant page, it's, uh, thirty-nine out of fifty-one in the packet and, uh, Commissioner Lethen is correct, the, at least the garage in front has vertical siding. Um, and, uh, yeah, I, I, I mean, I think it's fine, like, and it does, I think the, the texturing of the, uh, property immediately adjacent to the right is kind of a vertical patterning as well. I think the, the, the concern that, um, Commissioner Morgan had brought up around the relative durability and quality and, uh, sort of standard of care that's required for the, the T-one-eleven versus some sort of composite, I mean, I think it's a valid concern, but it, it is, you know, caveat emptor, that, that the, the house belongs to the owner and if they want to buy something that, that requires a little more care to keep it from getting termites and dry rot, then, you know, it's their house.
So this is the house now and the other rendering that was shown at, um, the A R All right, please, please hold while everything loads.
Commissioner Madden, were you saying something? You're muted.
Yeah, sorry, uh, so the original elevation you showed, didn't show that detached garage in front of it, so I assume the elevation is taken in front of, or behind the garage, so you just see the main house, is that right? Or is the, or is the elevation mislabeled?
Uh, that is correct, but the gr, the detached garage is shown on the plan sets.
Well, I'm, I'm, uh, I agree with Commissioner Morgan, that T-one-eleven is an awful product, um, it should not be used, uh, if, especially on, on a new construction, uh, but, uh, that's not the same thing as vertical siding, uh, necessarily, so.
So these are the renderings in the staff report that were presented at A R C.
Okay, and so this porch is kind of odd looking, um, with these, with this post in the middle and these two kind of punchouts in it, i, i, I think because there's just a small, there's only one step into the porch, it looks odd. Um, is, so they're trying to clad that column in siding as well or is it something else, just a post coming down?
So the recommendation was made by A R C to, um, to upgrade the entire front facade with architectural elements, I believe, including, uh, giving the porch a more defined entry and perhaps some other, uh, decorative elements elsewhere on the front facade.
Could I, could I suggest, uh, that we move to our in, inviting the designer and, and owner to speak to discuss that issue and then, uh, when we come back, we can discuss with Brandon and Pamela whether we want to formally attach a condition on our approval? Is that, does anybody else have urgent questions that, or could, would it be all right if we just directly bring in the owner?
I agree with you, it's good to talk to the designer and the owner.
All right, uh, Pamela, Brandon, if we could invite in our, uh, owner and architect?
Sure, Mr. Vice Chair, uh, would you like to open a public hearing?
Uh, sorry, does the public hearing come before or are they part of the public hearing? Sorry, I thought that the owner was a separate presentation from public comment.
Good point, all right, uh, that's a slight distinction that Madeline would note, but, you know, going with the flow, um, let's invite, I believe, the owner and the, um, architects are in the audience with us right now. And I do not see any, and I, I do see, uh, Mr. Mappa, the owner is with us. Uh, Mr. Mappa, would you like to address some of the comments or would you like to address, um, the commission?
Yeah, um, I, I think I've made it clear to the A R C that, um, we'll go with the, uh, horizontal siding on the exterior.
I think the, the larger concern was around whether, uh, you and your designer have the sort of time, resources to, to do a little bit of redesign of that front porch area. Uh, it does seem it's sort of a little boxy and, and I think, uh, there was concern around whether that could be designed to actually have maybe some sort of protruding portico or awning, or I think Kelly had had a couple other ideas and the consideration was that, um, we might formally put a condition on approval to, to have Pamela, uh, approve whatever that redesign might look like, but I don't know if that, if, I don't know where your concern, but concern level is around whether that amount of design work might be problematic or prohibitive.
Yeah, Jose, would you like, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, please.
Yes, uh, sorry if I start coughing, I got the cough out all of a sudden, so, so I'll try to make it quick. Uh, yes, uh, the, the day after we had the previous meeting, uh, uh, or the same day, actually same night, I talked to Mr. Mappa and I suggested perhaps we could push the entire porch about three feet past the garage, uh, that will create an extra post, that two plus one and then, eh, we, he doesn't want to, uh, columns, very decorated columns, but maybe some kind of ten to twelve inch columns with a little bit of, uh, enhancement in the bottom and the top, uh, and the fact pushing it three feet, that would give a little bit of better look, I think, to the entire design and we would still be, I believe, within, at about twenty feet from the, from the front property line, even after move, because right now the porch is only three feet deep. So definitely push another three, that'll make a six-foot deep porch, uh, and create an extra column and that definitely enhance, should enhance the view from the front.
Thank you, it sounds like that addresses, uh, the concern that Commissioner Madden had as well, I think.
Yeah, exactly, I think, uh, going in front of the garage is better, uh, so, more in line with the city recommendations.
All right, are there any other, any other questions, uh, from the commission for our, uh, owner and designer?
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, uh, would that increase the overall size of the project
Was there a question for us?
Uh, for, uh, because I, I, I'm not as familiar with the project, so I want to make sure that the commissioners are, um, aware of the possible ramification of the last-minute design and if the commission is, is okay with increasing the overall, um, project scope and we can note that in the final note, uh, motion. So, uh, Mr. Designer and Mr. Owner, if, if you are proposing, um, a change, would that change the overall scope?
Oh, by extending the front porch three feet, that's gonna increase the square feet by about thirty, roughly thirty square feet more, uh, on the front porch, uh, and I don't recall about what is the maximum lot coverage if there's one, uh, so I'm not sure if that would go over the maximum flo, uh, maximum lot coverage if there's one.
We, we should have, we should have that in the table, yes, Brandon, it should be a pretty quick check. Um, I, I mean, I will say, I, I, I think there's pretty, it sounds like pretty broad agreement among us that we like the articulation of the front porch and so I, it seems like we would be inclined to probably approve this, even if it does go slightly over in order to get the benefit of the, the better facade, um, but we can certainly, we can certainly check. Does, as just a technical point, does front porch count towards floor area? I mean, it's sort of, it's like somewhere between interior floor and yard, it's a little, you know, it's kind of a, a between category.
So it does not count if it's not enclosed, it does not count as part of the, um, floor area, but it counts as part of the lot coverage.
Is the, uh, house, uh, completely slab on grade? The, the porch step is very small. I'm just wondering if this house has a crawl space under the living area or is it slab You're, I think you'd be...
Probably answered my question. Myself, actually, I have never, I haven't been at the side, it was my assistant that measured the house, but by looking at the pictures that he took from all, all around, it looks like a portion of the house on the back, uh, may be on a raised floor, a small portion, perhaps, uh, portion of the existing, but then the rest seems to be in a slab, the front portion of the existing house seems to be in a slab and then the new addition will be in a slab, but a small portion of the back seems to be on a raised floor, but the, I don't know if the owner, uh, knows that, but I believe there's a small portion in the back that is on the raised floor.
Okay, because I think what, what makes it look slightly odd is that the, the roof is very, very tall, right? It's, it's, you know, got this big gable, but the porch has such a slight step, doesn't even look like it's even a six-inch step, it looks something less. And then you have that post in the middle kind of creating these two little punch-throughs. Um, so I was just curious, because, uh, um, you know, it is a, a big volume we're adding on a one-story house, but, uh, normally the porch has some verticalness to it where it's, you know, two or three steps maybe and that's probably why this looks a little strange to us, you don't see that on this porch. Um, so I was just curious.
Just one small, mo, more detail on that. Uh, I have some pictures that were sent to me and the front of the, the front door of the house is already pretty low, so if we were, I even suggested the owner, perhaps maybe creating a step up on the new addition, but he didn't want to have a step because, uh, my concern was that sometimes you can draw something, but it, but is it practical? Is it gonna work when it's being built? And, um, one of my concerns was, is this gonna be the finished floor to be a few inches above grade? And right now, the way I have it is the most that we could, uh, so it's an approximate about four, five inches, maybe six inches above grade. So, uh, if we make it any higher, it would be with that step up, or is that the owner didn't want to have.
Understood, okay, just be, uh, mindful that you're below code level, um, and you're prone to dry rot and termites when you're so close to the soil like that, so it's important that you use the proper materials when you're building those walls, uh, that are resistant to those things, so, but, okay, thank you for explaining.
Are there any other, uh, further discussions in, uh, with the owner or designer or should we move on to inviting public comment? I see no, see no hands, um, if we could invite public comment, uh, if anyone in the attendees group would like to raise their hand, or I believe it is star nine on Zoom.
Mr. Vice Chair, you do not have any hand at the moment.
Shall we have a motion to close our public hearing and, uh, move on?
Sure.
I motioned to close public hearing.
Let's second this.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Vice Chair Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Durazo?
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen?
Aye.
Commissioner Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
You have five votes and motion passes.
All right, uh, so thank you for your time, uh, Mr. Mappa and Mr. Jimenez. Um, are there any closing conversations here in terms of, uh, closing out this, oh, uh, oh, I have a, I see a hand from, uh, Rick Biassadi in the attendees group, I don't know if that's as a public comment?
Well, um, Mr. Vice Chair, you have, um, just closed the public hearing.
Yes, all right, well, too late. All right then, um, so yeah, I, I see, I don't know if you still have your hand up, uh, Commissioner Madden, just from earlier, or whether you wanted to comment at this point.
Oh, I, I just wasn't sure, are we putting the conditions on this? Uh, are we about to do that, uh, for the...
Well, if one of us... Well, if one of us would like to actually try to formulate a motion, we certainly could, it sounds like. I don't know if we want to just ask um Pamela and Brandon if they have any sort of recommendations around the language for that, of exactly how to state this concern in a way that has teeth.
Um, I was not present at the Architectural Review Committee last Thursday. Brendan, do you have any suggestions of how we can incorporate the concern into the conditions?
Um, I mean, I would suggest to be more specific, because the recommendations were somewhat vague. Um, if there is a specific way to uh um ask for a certain type of porch or certain type of architectural elements that the commission would like to see.
Um, or the other way that I can propose is I, I hear that the commission has um strong preference not to use the T one eleven. Um, perhaps we can add a, a condition to say the exterior material um is to exclude um the use of any T eleven for any purpose. And then if there is any preference on vertical, horizontal siding, orientation, we can also add that to it.
Yes, I'll say, I, I am, I'm not inclined to impose that restriction, I would, I would vote against adding that condition. I mean, like, I agree at both aesthetically and as a matter of what I would do as a homeowner, that I wouldn't do it this way, but it doesn't seem like something where the city needs to interfere with this person's personal preferences for their house, especially given that the, at least of the adjoining property, the sort of prevailing lines of the surface on that are vertical as well. Um, I, I think that the, it is, I understand it, it's difficult because this is sort of an aesthetic issue, which makes it very hard to like write down a mathematical formula for what satisfies it. Um, I think the suggestion by the designer that they are already considering bringing out the porch by an additional three feet, um, I think that's very positive. Um, I agree with Commissioner Madden that having the pedestrian entrance of the home be more prominent than the garage is just a positive feature for a neighborhood. Um, and it sort of, it creates enough of a porch that you can now stick a chair there, you can sit and chat with people on the front porch, right? Sort of, it's a, it creates a more of a communal space. Um, and so if we could, I don't know how to formalize this, that like we could say, like, you know, as a condition that there will be a redesign that adds this additional three feet to the porch and uh adds some sort of um elements of architectural interest to be approved by the planning director and with the other, like, you know, I think we want to maintain flexibility for the owner to express their own aesthetics with it, right? We don't want to design it for them. And so we do, I, I think, want to leave a fair amount of flexibility here. I see hands from uh Commissioners Morgan and Lathan, I'm sorry, I don't know which of you had your hand up first.
But let ladies first.
Thank you, that's very kind. Um, uh, I tend to agree with Vice Chair Harmon that um I think it's encouraging that the owner uh said that he is interested in doing the horizontal siding, which I presume is not the T one eleven. Um, so I think that's great, I also agree that um it, it does feel a little bit funny to prevent him from using a material, a building material that will ultimately be his own uh responsibility and upkeep, uh and that may be driven by overall, you know, expenses and practicality, and also maybe matching the existing, uh, the existing siding on the house if that is still good. Um, and I think that if we are going to be making, adding in a, a condition of approval regarding the porch, um, I think it would be great if the porch was increased by the three feet or two feet or however much they would like to increase it by, I don't think it necessar, the wording should say must or uh, you know, must be added on three inches, but maybe, but ultimately to achieve um some sort of you know, attractive and focal entryway uh to the liking of um of Pamela.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yeah, I'm pleased that the owner has agreed that they will use horizontal siding, and I'm hoping that he will use a composite, some, something similar to hardy board, which is, as I said, was guaranteed for fifty years. It's in his own interest to have something that's easy to keep, and I think it'll look far superior to T one eleven. And with the, with the price of wood and plywood at the moment, uh, I would imagine that a cementitious board like harding is probably very comparable in price to T one eleven. That's it, thank you.
I guess in the interest of keeping this moving, would somebody like to make a motion proposing the original adoption? And then we can have a friendly motion from somebody to amend that with the additional conditions? Is that an option here? That way we can discuss, we can take a vote on one or both conditions as a, as a thing?
Um, I make a motion that we approve this application and um, anyway, approve Architectural Review Permit A R twenty one dash zero zero five and use permit, and use permit U P twenty one dash zero zero five based on findings one to six and conditions of approval one to twenty three. Um, I, we, and with the condition that uh the porch uh be extended uh to, and with the appro, uh to a design approved by the director uh for the planning commission.
Okay, and we're, so you're only adding the condition of the porch and we're going to leave the siding up to the discretion of the owner, but we're, okay?
Mister Vice Chair, if I may, um, can I ask the motion maker to clarify the porch shall be a minimum of six feet?
Uh, yes, the porch be six feet.
At six feet total, so three feet additional over the existing, right?
Yeah.
Do you think that the wording should be um maybe increased up to six feet? Or must it be at exactly six feet? I think maybe a little wiggle would be.
I was hoping for a minimum of six feet, so.
Okay.
Were we trying to get like a minimum beyond the face of the garage? Does that happen to be six feet? Or is it feet beyond the garage or three feet beyond the garage? Is that a better way to?
Um, looking at the plans, I was hoping, um, so perhaps we could do three feet beyond the face of the garage or a minimum six feet depth. Um, so I think currently it's proposing a three feet, so if we require a minimum six feet depth, um, it's, it's at a certain, a current location without much modi modification, but basically adding another three feet to it. Uh, what I'm trying to avoid is a massive redesign so that the final approval does not comply with what is being noticed um of the original project. So trying to kind of still keep the essence of the overall project, but with minor tweaks.
So the motion as it stands uh is meeting what we've just discussed?
Yes.
I'll second.
So, sorry, just to clarify, so the existing plan, I'm just looking at the proposed floor plan right now, that there is like a flat surface all the way across the front, the porch is kind of recessed into that by three foot zero, and so we're adding the, the three feet in front, and so that's hence the, and is our, our phrasing going to be sort of uh just calling it a six foot depth and that's clear enough that it's, it's a three feet extension?
Uh, I am gonna rely on Brendan, who is more intimate about this uh floor plan. Brendan, do you think you have enough um guidance around the commission to move forward?
Yes, I, I believe so.
All right, and I will ask for a roll call vote on our motion.
All right, Commissioner, uh, I'm sorry, Mister Chair, Vice Chair Harmon?
Uh, yes, aye.
Commissioner Durazo?
Aye.
Commissioner Lathan?
Aye.
Commissioner Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, good, thank you very much, uh, Brandon and Pamela, and we can invite in uh Chair Biassati and find out why he had his hand up earlier.
And also Commissioner Johnson.
Oh, yes, right, yes, don't want to forget, Mary Lou.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you, well done, Commissioner Harmon. Uh, that was a complex issue, I'm glad you, you handled it.
Thank you, thank you for having me, the fun one.
Yeah, well, and you can thank my cat for raising my hand for me. All right, so we'll move on to item six, which is comments for items not on the agenda. So before we adjourn, are there any members of the public who wish to address the commission at this time? Once again, resumesers raise your hand, and if you're on the phone, it's star nine.
Chair, you don't have any hand, but I have a hand. Um, can we go back to the items round staff?
Sure, is there, that's number seven.
Uh, that's number six.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, so I do have, so on the agenda, I have the volunteer for the August twelfth, um, Architectural Review Committee volunteers. In addition to that, I have a few other follow ups, so I'll start with what's on the agenda. If I can have um three volunteers as normal for the August A R C, I see a hand, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Thank you, Commissioner Durazo. Thank you, Commissioner Lathan, can I have one more backup just in case?
Be an alternate.
All right, so that takes care of the stated item. Um, the next one, you don't have to absolutely let me know, but this is kind of uh me giving the commission a heads up. Um, for the August Planning Commission, we're preparing two big items to bring to you. Um, so we're hoping that we could start the planning commission at five o'clock. Um, you can, you don't have to let me know right now, but if you definitely have a conflict at five o'clock, uh feel free to call me, email me, text me, so that we have, um, we can arrange a quorum. So the two big project that will be coming to you, and we're hoping to um do a tight, certain agenda, is to bring the twenty one, twenty nine units, uh Glenview subdivision, to Planning Commission for recommendation to council. As most of you know, this is a project that has been in making for quite some time. So this is exciting that we'll bring that twenty nine unit to you for recommendation. Um, later on that evening, we'll also bring you the Bay Hill specific plant and the draft E I R, the final E I R, the phase one, the development agreement, um, the general plan amendment, the zoning code, the slew of things to Planning Commission. With a project of that size, we want to make sure that there's ample time for Planning Commission to ask your question, to digest. Uh, we're also inviting the YouTube team to be present and possibly making a small presentation so that um everyone in the room is available and also um has the freedom to ask questions. So it's gonna be quite a night, um, and which is the reason why we would like to bump it up to five o'clock.
Pamela, how, how far in advance are we gonna get our packets?
Great question. Uh, we're hoping that you will get the packet um the week prior. So I'm shooting for the Wednesday before, so you, not just the weekend, but you'll have a few days before the weekend and also leading up to Planning Commission. Uh, what I would also want to uh make it available to the Planning Commission is that we're also finalizing a virtual learning website for the Bay Hill specific plant. Um, it should be rolled out in part of the city manager's newsletter tomorrow, if not the day after, uh where you can click on it. This is something staff is very excited, we've been working with the consultant for over a month. Um, I am not a tech savvy person, but I find myself lost in that room where you can turn around, listen to avatars talking, uh look, click on things and flows up. It's just quite amazing with the amount of information that's available. So in addition to the packet, feel free to kind of play around, click the buttons, I, I promise they won't hurt you. Um, just, and there's a lot of information out there, and to kind of even get myself ahead of time is that once the Planning Commission is able to make recommendation on the item, the next stop will be City Council. Um, kind of similar to Glenview, this is also a project that has been in the making for quite some time. This is an exciting milestone for the city, um, so we want to make sure that the Planning Commission um has more than adequate time to uh review um both items. So we don't necessarily, I don't necessarily need to have an answer right away, we probably will be reaching out to individually um to make sure there's a quorum, but I, I do want to give a heads up to you. Um, along that line, you should also receive the email from the YouTube team um about a possible upcoming tour that's different from the Bay Hill specific plant and the phase one. Um, the YouTube team would like to tour, uh, take you to a tour of the fourteen fifty where you see the big cranes, the big hole, the truss coming in. Um, so feel free to coordinate with the YouTube representative as mentioned in the email, but just so if you have not received that, it should be waiting in your city in the email inbox. Lastly, um, I want to welcome Commissioner Durazo one more time for an exciting commissioner, we're finally full, thank you, uh, the very last piece. And also wanted to ask to all the commissioners if you have had a chance to receive the updated Planning Commission roster, uh contact information, if you don't, again, email, text, call me, and we'll make sure that we send it over to you.
Okay.
Yeah?
Yes.
Pamela?
Yeah?
You, on that meeting, you're talking about five o'clock, are you looking at August the seventeenth?
That's correct. Yeah, and one correction, um, at the end of this uh agenda, I realized that I put the wrong Planning Commission day, it should be August seventeen, not August nineteen, so it's the Tuesday.
And we should consider that five P M until further notice?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. All right, that's all I have, Mister Chair.
All right, thank you very much, Pamela. Okay, once again, for the public comment, if there was anyone that wanted to speak to us, is there anyone, their hands raised?
We do not have any hands.
Okay, um, items number eight, items from members in subcommittee reports, anyone having anything for the commission?
Do we have to close that public comments not on the agenda?
No, that one's not a hearing, you only have to close the hearings on items.
All right, and uh, welcome to Commissioner Durazo. Uh, it's nice to have you here. Uh, we look forward to meeting you in person at some time at a planning commission meeting. Um, let's see, anyone else have anything for the commission? All right, well, with that, we are adjourned until August eight, uh seventeen or eighteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeenth at five P M. Thank you, everyone, it was a good project tonight, did well.
Thank you, good night, everyone.
Thanks, good night.
Night out.